This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, on her way. Do you have a time this moment? I don't want to start without her on your first meeting. Okay. Thanks for being with us, folks. Appreciate you being here. Wow. This is all very awkward now. Is there anything we can do in the meantime? You know, I don't know. I kind of like it. See the whole thing, I suppose, for you first. So maybe let's just pause for a few minutes. Sorry for the false start. All right, yeah, let's take a 10 minute break. Everybody all right over there? All right.
Why are we electing new chair? Are you leaving us or something?
It's just time. It's been it's been years. Almost two years.
You giving me it's me, not you speech?
It's in our, we put it in our procedures that we're supposed to do every two years.
So it hasn't lost two years, huh? But there's no reason why you couldn't get it. I mean, it's not terminated, right?
Not as far as I know. But especially with a full roster for the first time in quite a while, it seemed like good timing. Okay. No problem. We should be in here. Let's try call and roll again. All right, before we go on, I would like to welcome Commissioner Shattuck to the planning commission. Thanks so much for being here.
Thank you so much. I'm so sorry to everybody even in line.
Most of us. Not a problem at all. We are glad to have you. First up on our agenda is election of chair. And this says acting chair. Is that? Okay. Okay, fantastic. That's not. Okay. All right. Do we have? Sorry, we only do this once every two years, so. I'm gonna flub it a little bit, I'm sure. Okay. I don't know how to do this. I think we, that's just, I'll open it for nominations for chair.
I nominate Tel Jensen for chair.
I second that.
Okay.
Bang that gavel.
Okay. We have a motion second for Tel Jensen. Chair. Any other nominations? Well, I think we'd have a constitutional crisis if I turned that down, so I will accept the nomination and I think we need to vote on that. So. Do you call the vote, please? Yeah.
Brian Matson.
Resounding yes.
Karen Watts.
Yes. Absolutely.
Okay. That's fine. I'm moving right along. Thanks, everyone. That was quick, very efficient. Is election of the vice chair. So I will open the floor for nominations for vice chair of the Woodland Plan Commission. A little bit shy about this, are we?
So I will nominate Brian Matson.
I'll second that nomination.
I could do what?
Okay. Brian Matson has been nominated and seconded. Are there any other nominations for vice chair of the planning commission? You could make it interesting. Okay, all right. We have one nominee for vice chair. Do we accept that nomination?
I do.
Okay. In that case, can clear call the roll for voting on Brian Matson as the vice chair of the Woodland Plan Commission?
Of Matson?
Yes.
Brian Matson?
Yes.
Karen Watts?
Yes.
Sean Gofford?
Yes. Yes.
All right, fantastic. Yes.
So now that you have gone through that exercise, which has been so long, can I make a suggestion that you locate motion to set
Okay, that's a good question. What are? Can we save that till next month? Because I want to think about when terms end and begin and such, and try to line it up so it makes sense there. Okay, yeah, let's do that. Maybe we can get it out of there. Okay. All right. Would somebody, so typically we do, in our, I believe in our procedures, we have two years. Does that sound right?
For the chair?
Yes. Annual? Okay, that sounds great.
That's the way I remember it, yeah.
Okay. In that case, could I request a motion that we have officer election again on next year's January meeting?
I second that.
I'm asking you to make the motion.
I move that we have another election in January for chair and vice chair.
I second that.
Okay, fantastic. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion about that? All right. Anyone opposed to electing officers in January of 2022 meeting? 23 meeting. 2023. Thank you. Hearing, no one against the motion passes, and we will have an election again in January. Fantastic. Next up, looks like we have a presentation. Is this? Okay, all right, fantastic. Citizen Communications for Items That Are Not On The Agenda. Anyone? Would anyone present like to speak about an item that's not on the agenda? Anything at all? Just can't be on the agenda? All right. Do we have anybody? I don't see them virtually. I don't see them. All right. Next up then is approval of the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda.
Okay.
I second it.
All right. Motion's been made by Brian Matson, seconded by Sharon Watt to approve the agenda as written. Any discussion about that? No, all right. Anyone opposed to approving the agenda as written? Okay, motion carries. Moving on to approving the minutes from the April 21st 2022 meeting. Is that really last one? Okay.
I approve that we approve the minutes as written.
I second that.
Okay. Motion's been made by Brian Matson, seconded by Sean Gofford to approve the 21st, 2022 minutes. Thing to talk about there. All right. Anyone opposed to approving the minutes as written? All right, motion carries. Next up, we have public hearing for ordinance what is it, 1505, Item ZTA-22-003. This is reconsideration of code amendments for the development of residential units within the Highway Commercial Zoning District. I need to ask if any member of the planning commission has had any ex parte communication or has any conflicts of interest to declare on this agenda item? All right, fantastic. I think we have a staff presentation.
Thank you very much. So this is an issue that is coming back to the planning commission. For those of you who were familiar with this, we've wrestled with commercial zoning and possibly residential development to commercial zones. Our downtown commercial boards, our downtown business district allows for residential use above commercial uses. And when we made a minor change to our code back in 2019, the accidentally included language that allowed for a high density residential district and the way the structure did allow for some funky interpretations of the code that allowed for some high density residential to be built above the commercial ground floor. And the planning commission adopted more toward in the prevented of something impacting the case in the next week. And the planning commission went through the exercise of looking at some code language ordinance 1505, and we recommended approval for the language after that process. And it included a three story commercial uses above, I'm sorry, three stories of residential uses above commercial use. And that recommendation was forwarded to the planning council. And remember, this is a natural raised question, and that is they were unsure that that was the intent of the original allowance of residential commercial, which originally thought to be one story above one commercial. It might have been a little excessive for us to go three over one without a more detailed process and discussion. And so then we had to get back to the planning commission and have a board session for the last meeting. And what you have confronted me today is in very colorful mix of presentation. Because essentially, the question is, should it be three stories of residential, of one commercial? Should it be two above one? Should it be one above one? Or should we just change the code to not allow residential to be having commercial zone? Then do we even chance to really work on something that needs to use code amendment? And so what we have for you is the original version 1505 with the modifications in yellow. Those are the paintings of what you need to change. It literally is two or three words to make it two over one. The blue version then the exact same 1505, modified to be one over one. And then the violet or the purple on the T40 is the language changes that we constitute the limiting type of commercial residential use until we have a chance of looking at this out to a larger effort. And so that is essentially the presentation I have for you today, the forward view that we have before you. And one thing we didn't do last time that I would like to do is I'd like to put Brian on the spot. And I would like to ask him, given that he's our county planner, do you remember the mixed use process that went through the history of Clark County? Would it be SC018 related? Or would it be a long drawn out, you would be involved in the process? And maybe that might support whether or not that's a whole other thing.
I don't, I don't think I was a planner when they did the outreach for that. I've reviewed mixed use stuff, and it's complex, right? But I don't remember the outreach section. It was there when I got there, so to speak.
I point that out because Clark County has an entire department that's a public. They don't have a separate department from the long drawn out question. A lot of public consulting.
Are you saying we don't have a dedicated long range planning department? Wooden doesn't have that?
They have a separate dedicated long line.
Just joking around. I have one quick question before I open up to the rest of the commission. Just clarifying that what we are talking about today is just for highway commercial. This is not for the downtown. We're not changing the downtown. All right, fantastic.
Thanks for pointing that out.
Okay. Got that out of the way. Have any questions for Travis? We'll have discussion, further discussion in a moment. Just wanted to see if you have any quick questions for Travis before I open public testimony.
What are the advantages of having residential capabilities in the zone?
The idea was in the downtown commercial boards that we want to establish aesthetic that we have down there on the surface. Where you have four residential spaces that you want to store it. That's an encouraging exclusive. You're more likely to be able to build a residential area that helps support residential development. I mean, the idea is, once you get more people in the downtown, then you will get additional shops opening up, whether it's restaurants or stores, or people down there. The highway commercial issue is a completely unintended mistake. There was a relevant example for highway commercial, starting with four three residential.
So the clauses you get for downtown don't necessarily apply to the
That's correct. And in the downtown, there are many factors where it's in the highway commercial degree. As we weren't here for this discussion, but
All right, thanks Travis. Any other quick questions again? We'll have lots of time to small questions and talk amongst ourselves in a couple of minutes. Any last clarification from Travis? Okay. I'm gonna open public testimony then. So at this time, I ask that any member of the public who wishes to give testimony on this item, please approach the microphone and state your name and address. Anybody? All right. Okay, we have anybody online yet? No. Okay, no staff response, no final rebuttal. In that case, I'm going to close public testimony and move on to our deliberation. So initial thoughts. I have some idea of Sharon Watts' thought this morning.
So what else? I see it as two competing interests. You want density, right? You know, the best way to approach the affordable housing problem is to create more housing, right? So you have, density is good for that end, but then you don't want it to take the place of valuable commercial space. If they were to put viable commercial uses on the ground floor instead of a parking garage, which they're claiming is commercial, maybe it wouldn't be such an impact. Because these are competing interests that are, you know, in the public interest. I lean to saying no residential until they do some sort of mixed use outreach that more people can participate and decide on the outcome.
I agree.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
Okay. All right, just to be a little bit devil's advocate here, I think my my feeling is that, you know, if we limit it to a one to one ratio, nobody's gonna build an empty, you know, commercial shell space with housing on top, you know, with no intention of so I think maybe that you know, de facto does kind of limit things that we're trying to avoid, but does allow potentially some, you know, small projects, people dipping their toe in to see if it works around here. You know, the advantages, the advantages I see are regardless of where it is downtown, it's, you know, it's got that kind of historic, traditional downtown, but wherever you do this sort of thing, you're putting people and services in close proximity to each other, and that eases the load on our infrastructure, makes our infrastructure more efficient. And, you know, has advantages of that general nature. So I definitely agree that a bigger, bigger discussion needs to happen before we go full bore down this path. But I wonder if we can maybe
I agree with everything you said, and it might be that we do settle on one story above commercial, but I think the public should weigh in on that. You'd rather have a four hour meeting.
All right. Any other, seems like we have maybe reached consensus. Any other thoughts?
Our discussion.
Discussion?
Maybe.
Okay. All right.
I mean, if, at least if we open it up for the discussion, if people don't participate, then at least it was open for it, and then I would feel less controlling to make the decision myself, at least if there was the opportunity for the public to weigh in what they really want.
Okay, staff, you ready for that? That outreach project? All right. Great, could, I think, I think we're ready for a motion on this.
I move that we we choose no residential until an appropriate outreach can be created to make the decision after further public input.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to strike residential mixed use from the commercial, the highway commercials.
I should have specified that.
All right, fantastic. Any more discussion on the last looks? Okay. Let's call vote then.
No.
Brian Matson?
Yes.
And Karen Watts?
Yes.
Sean Gofford?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. So we'll close public hearing for ZTA-22-003. Excellent work. Moving right along, we have another public hearing. And that is item 22 dash sorry, ZTA-22-005. This is wield all terrain vehicle code amendment. Again, I'm going to ask if anyone has any ex parte communication or conflicts of interest?
Yeah.
All right. Outstanding. Then we have a staff presentation on this one.
Okay. Just to give a little bit of background, we have a workshop on this code. This was for people to present, to feel our lack. So this will be in public here for the code. The plan is moving forward and pushing base cases to five. If you and that's the basis, move forward the code to, as it goes to the capital likely is very divided. Right. From there. This code is put together in order to allow you to feel home based people within the high wooden street. It was backwards because whenever, when you have the the asphalt has, you have your distance as well as self, I mean, self and they are watching the town. So then if you allow for these residential spaces within so during that workshop, you gave a you gave me a number of suggestions moving forward, one of which was to ensure that within codes that stated specifically that insurance was fired, which I added when you told my words. It was seriously required to pay off. It's not in here, however, by adding this in, it would make sure that, it would make sure they can lay out within our local codes. They can lay out within our local code and present any central. And people. You also asked me to look into whether required flag, either higher disability aspect to be. To be utilized within. Within, uh, within the city limit. Now, through my research. What I found, and this is something that you want to report, it is a little people. You can make recommendations with that in the picture. However. Already all those labels, WATV, two with five, trying to be headlights, carrying things over the road as points are letting things distracted. And this would not match up, meet up with driving directions. So my thinking, and as I said, since we get the other set, it would be valuable. My thinking is that we want to make it so that we give people some power standing coming to woodland and vice versa. And now the fire, I think for. Maybe that is, that's the activity in which that's there. Many of the WATVs that would be allowed by the code are strived. And I think that all parts have high visibility, um, like other states. So the other. Part was, the thing you know, just said was that the WATV zone should be expanded. And I believe the last page of the package, we have a map, I just put together, it's not a final on the map. However, it says, in the case, the area to which WATVs would be allowed by the code. I primarily focus, uh, the central, um, rural areas and ensuring people could flow through. There are a couple of specific parts out. So, and the limit is anybody within the city, I'd see them in under thirty-five miles per hour. I believe you cannot have any rules outside of I-5, which obviously is a. These WATVs would not be allowed for within the city, they would keep them hold that, like he's putting the code into the state. That is very consistent with how they call it, um, regarding the process. The setup would be Atlantic and Pacific Avenue. It was pushed out. Some allowing is to be held there as essentially extended times off there on I-5. And this volume of traffic going back and forth is just really quite high. It is also weird that it does not, it does not have a single impact, it looks like it's pending. Most, uh, of the city pending utilized without any, I also. Our, that post out of it, between Doris and Sixty. And in fact, it's a, a service, but well. And this based on the number of large constable walking down that street every day. We're all in two, go down to the nation that they just did, fifteen. Fifteen, always in one of the top ten with other staff members, the fact that it's gone down. This, I definitely say this, and I would look to start at that. As well as Beacon and Gilgo for similar reasons, based on the traffic. Because that's the, that's the. I believe that is really the end of my presentation. If you have any questions, more than welcome to ask that.
Thanks David, appreciate it. I have one quick question, and this might actually be. Does Clark County also? Hello? ATVs?
Not to my knowledge.
I do not.
Okay.
So.
Okay, but we don't share a border with any of them, sorry. Now Stevenson is not in Clark County. All right. Fantastic. Any other questions for David before we?
David, just to clarify, if I understood you correctly. The, the already existing ordinance that allow this in Calitz County don't require the flag. Is that what I?
No.
My layman's understanding of the flag was mainly because of dunes and elevation changes to, to see you, right? It's not on a flat surface type of thing.
Makes sense. I think they look spotty. They do. Put one on your bike. She good.
David, you did say that you eliminated the truck route.
Yeah. The, uh, talked about.
It's, you can't really see it. But it is, there's no.
Watching that as well. Before you come off. But. This the area, um, I'm drawing speed, it's, 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 here, it's been happening, it's been happening, it's now like that. So we talked about all truck traffic, because of course, what we can do along. Those are that need. Do you want to say that this is?
Okay, I have one other question. All occupants of a WATV shall wear DOT and good comments unless originally equipment manufacturing rollover protection system. Is there an age on that?
I believe you have to.
Okay.
Driver's license requirement?
Yeah. You have to have a driver's license, so.
You can be in one of those on the street.
Yeah.
That's what I wanted to hear. That's what I wanted to hear.
So just to operate one though, or?
To be in it. To be in it. So if there's. Children in it. Do they need to wear a helmet?
Yeah.
Sixteen and under, no matter if they're driving or not. Whatever.
So. I believe that too lucky that it wasn't safe, it was, it was classified.
So no matter if it's a rollover protection system or not, they still have to wear a helmet.
Okay. Just clear, make sure I'm understanding this correctly, the city is the applicant in this case, right? We don't have a. Okay. Any last quick questions for David? Okay, in that case, I'm gonna open public testimony now. So, anyone who would like to speak. For or against this particular agenda item? Would you please approach the, come up to the lectern here and tell us your name and address? And I'm gonna give you a five minutes.
I'm Mike Peterson. I was the one that dropped this, that city council. Earlier this year. Pretty much David's been handling this pretty good, bring it, bring it through. And it, it, it comes down from the state, through the department licensing to the county by home. But I think the city residents, they enjoy it. And it's, uh. You know, our group and the people that enjoy these things, we take safety, uh, a little serious. Keep the sport going, keep people safe. I think so, allowing, uh, an alternative way to get around, you know, the city. Utilize our machines and, uh, have family fun and connect with those cities. I do have a question about the, the zoning map that David laid out, it's not a great job doing that. He's trying to keep us safe, everybody else, you know, I can see that, that's a good thing. He's, he's eliminated the, the frontage roads, um, the heavy traffic centers. No, it's probably good, sorry. The truck route part, I'd like to see that connected, I mean, it's. I rode in Havasoro, where they're, they don't have any restrictions there. They even let us drive on forty mile an hour roads. And, uh, all the semis and, uh. Vehicles like that, uh, they see us, we run our headlights, we have signals and gun horns and. I'm just as courteous and mab as I am in my own car. If I see a truck that's running, it's on, I stop, it's like everybody else, I gotta go, I'm gonna do this thing. I would like to see that, that connector on Bozart, Beacon and Dial. But leave the, leave the frontage roads if we could, just like, yeah, first start. Thank you.
Thanks a lot, appreciate it. All right, anyone else wanna speak in favor or opposed to this agenda? All right. You can say more if you want.
He covers so well.
All right. All right, okay, fantastic. Appreciate you not repeating each other, that's. Helpful, okay. Make sure we don't have anybody online. It's just us, right? Okay. Yeah, come on. Give you more than a minute, give you five minutes.
My name's Trevor Beatty, I live at ninety-five thirty Old City, Charlotte, here in Dillon. We do, like, this is part of the Daction Towers, cause Rover costs from the, for there. And, uh, the street legal declaration, the duty of the inspections from the state is pretty elaborate. It should, all the safety requirements are there, uh, with the flakers and the mirrors and, you know, everything a car would have to be on the street. It's, it's definitely on par with that. And so, I just want you guys to know that, that definitely, every vehicle that has all those good places, that's one of the things.
So you're doing, you actually do the inspections for the state?
Yep.
Okay, interesting, all right, didn't know that.
So do you have to turn in a certificate and everything, I bet, sign off on it?
Yeah, so we fill it out and on there, we have, put like a written license and all the stuff and sign it, and it goes to the checklist. And then we, we have to test, like, go take a proper license. And then it also, and then with that, that's how they would take it on.
Okay.
Okay, so you're on the hook if somebody does something stupid.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah, we gotta pay attention.
Cool. Thank you Travis. All right, last chance, don't be shy. There's democracy in action here. Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and close public testimony then and move on to the commission deliberation.
I certainly don't want to be Captain Bring Down. I have no problem with it. I actually don't even have a problem with Mr. Peterson's suggestion of opening it up. The, the truck, not, not the frontage roads, but the other, the other truck routes.
Yeah.
I, I think that everyone's concerned about the safety, but no more than you worry about any other driver whenever you drive anywhere. You know, I, I, I would imagine that the, these ATV riders are probably even more vigilant than your average person in their car, right? Just because, but that's just what I think.
Okay, thanks. Any other thoughts? Deliberations? That's true. Chair?
No.
Okay. I guess my only, my only thought was, is kind of superseded by. What you folks said, and that's, you know, capels and, capels is kind of orphaned if we, we close up. And then I wondered how folks who live on Bozart. Would they have to ride on the sidewalk to get into the?
I live on Bozart, their sidewalks on both sides of the street, the ATVs won't be riding on the sidewalk, because that wouldn't be allowed.
All right, thank you. All right, in that case, I think, again, I'm hearing some consensus, so I think we're ready for a motion.
I just, I don't know how the rest of the commissioners feel about opening up the couple more streets as, as requested. But I'll go ahead and start, I move that we. Accept staff's recommendation for allowing the wield altering vehicles. With, with the modification that we open up the two streets that Mr. Peterson requested.
Which are?
I'm sorry, Beacon and, what was the other one, sir?
Beacon, Guide and Bozart.
Beacon, Guide and Bozart, Bozart, sorry. Thank you.
I second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, any discussion about that? Okay, let's call vote then. Yes.
Brian Russell?
Yep.
Karen Watt?
Yes.
Connor Lockhart?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, fantastic. Moving right along, we might get to see some fireworks.
Maybe.
Yeah, thanks for coming out, folks, appreciate you getting involved.
Have fun out there.
All right. Tell all your friends to come to planning commission meetings. You know, we randomly have snacks.
We don't ever have.
You never know when it's gonna happen, so you have to come to every meeting. All right, so public hearing for. ZTA dash two-two dash zero-zero, oh, zero-five is now closed, moving on to. ZTA dash two-two dash zero-zero-four special event permanent code amendment. Again, do we have any expertise, communication or conflicts of interest? Fantastic, how about a staff presentation?
Yes, I do have a few. So, those, that, the patients, the background, this is regarded as the. So they wish improvement that we have been working on for a while, for a couple months now, regarded as. Your special events, how they are operated, uh, evidently, they're, they're like. This is a special event on public property, including our park, has been made aware. For many years now, there has never been any exposed language regulated or outlined, you have to take the process, our, and everybody for your side. So here, uh, as I said, we have a, a workshop. Here we are, we have not, some key meetings, and we have another workshop. With, with both of us, and this will be up here. We are hoping to, uh, we hope to go out, to have both like, we still have six. I mean, I'm still, if you're ready, maybe try and, who not? So. One major. One major aspect that, that we should draw out, that is by the state, that. I'm going to change this, they, um, the. Last workshop in April, for people, will primarily, they've done, they're having, we're covering. Uh, only. In fact, they, uh, I think it's all clear, um, things are, I want to say. Uh, only, in fact, that, uh, I think it's all clear, um, things are going to be better. However, um, we just, we just got this, that, and this, and this fell in some of the, some of the projects. The, this is that's where we're driven, other parts of it. Right, for attention, that they felt that, you know, that, that special events cannot be seen, because we don't, it's all the flows, go away. Instead, then, people looking, people don't, 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 they're not coming. So it's one of these, you find, the five, right, within the, 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 um, I mean, basis, you know, so typically, you can structure that. And then we can spell there, they require construction in the city. There had been some back and forth today over there, for our public work department. They believe they are in these events, you, these events, to, uh, to just, to find a way to, to provide, and, 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 whether it's, or whether it's special events. To, uh, to both of them. Well, other departments have brought up this, based on a, this is supposed to be right way, as well as the application process. Or, we, while they understand the, 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 the. While they understand this, when they have this, 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 it might be activated, uh, hard to, from, to, to, individuals who, uh, do the whole. So that is one aspect that we are, we are, we are discussing, some discussions regarding. I think from my discussion, whether or not we go with a combined process, by a cycle event, several, around it, allows for people to avoid the cycle event, separate from people. Done to a right way permit. It's the, the ordinance would be my fine, so then, we are challenging people to get the, for, for. That would be something that would be our topic. If that is said, are there any questions?
I have, I have a question, it's just for my own clarification. Why, the, my understanding, please correct me if I'm wrong, that this was brought forth by the clerk to help them do their job better, but there was pushback from Public Works, is that correct? And, but Public Works isn't, isn't here to present their case, I guess?
Public Works has, obviously traditionally, helped, um, this is maybe how it was. So, obviously, that's something that I, we do understand. Is the point today, and obviously, they want to make sure that it's a good.
Would, would, you know, utility work in the right of way, that would still require one of their right of way permits, right? It doesn't supplant that, right? It's just an additional layer for.
An additional layer, exactly what we're talking about is, if you're using a bike, if you were saying about a special event, uh, going to have, going about, and you want to also post the, the, next to the park, you will show the, 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 the.
Wait, 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 no, this, this does away with the two permits. Please.
So I'm the one that started a lot of this. So, what was going on is the special event permit, there was numerous forms, people had to fill out. And what the goal originally was, is to create one form that they could fill out. We quickly learned, we didn't have a code, so this is where the code came about, so we had some kind of guidance to figure out what would be allowed for a special event, anything looking on. Then we got into the special later on, after we had our workshop about right of ways, working the street. Prior to all of this, we had just a street closure form that someone had to fill out, on top of a special event form that they had to fill out, on top of other forms. Prior to all of this, we had just a street closure form that someone had to fill out, on top of a special event form that they had to fill out, on top of other forms that they had to fill out. So color works came in and said, well, they need a right of way permit. Well, if you look at the right of way permit itself, it states if you're doing work or placing an item in the right of way. It doesn't specify, it's mostly for construction in the right way, it does not cover block party. So I was still, but I, I'm still in the favor of doing just the special event application, which I think there was one that was putting in the pocket there that missed out three closure, which was what we had prior to, it's now one four. Versus having it as a right of way, if you have to have a block party to fill out a right of way, then you have to change the right of way permit to adapt to that. The other concern was in the approval process, wouldn't get the management team, it would be held after public, public works, all the level, but the management team would, for a special event, so it's supposed to go to the management.
I think there's a pretty sharp delineation in my mind between, you know, historic work in the right of way, I'm just closing it for an event. I think they're apples and oranges. I don't, I'm fine with separating, separate event permit for just closing it when you're not doing anything to it.
Another good example of how we think of this is, historically, when a special event like the Pine Thursday comes along, our code says kiosks require administrative permission to permit. So if you're going to do a snow cone kiosk, it requires administrative permission to permit. But since it's part of Pine Thursday, and they may have forty vendors, it's unrealistic for us to administer a condition of permit every day.
We can't be having snow cone anarchy out there.
That's right. That's right. So we, traditionally, since I got here, and before I realized there was no code governing this at all, I think it's a condition that because the special event permit was considered by the city council, it was, and it was kind of the umbrella of approval for that. And part of our thinking when we originally draft the code, that is, if Pine Thursday plans to close the road for two hours for the animal parade, and on Saturday it's closed for six hours for vendors, and on Sunday the crew then is closed for three hours on the vendor, or on, for the crew team. Then we were, we were thinking, well, that's a special event, and we don't necessarily think it makes sense for them to be both closing for it. But Public Works has stated that each one should be considered being of itself, and we're kind of wrestling with that internal part of the reason why you go to Texas. Hoping for your approval, whether or not you take, you want like permit, or it's like the right of way closure to be closed. When I think of right of way, I think of somebody cutting into the road, digging in the track, putting it back to that evening, where Public Works, you know, any kind of road that's closed, will have to be right of way. And is it part of this, is that we want to treat it as a special event, or do we want to run each one of those three closures through a separate process?
Okay.
And the code, uh, code I'm fixing it does typically call out those that, 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 you know. It's like, you know, you know, I don't see anything that, I, I do that special event, if I open that to the public. However, it does seem like it would be, like, make people, I said, then a lot more people come, that, that, that something that, I think, a lot of people would be, maybe, about, you know, special event, they would, they want a right of way, that's additional for you. Because obviously, you wouldn't, of course, you wouldn't, those different, for the people that need different type of things, that would be bad.
The other, the other issue to add to what came about right of way, you read the right of way today, it says, it's built for constructional companies to fill out, and it says licensed and bonded. A private person is not licensed and bonded. You know, with a special event permit is actually able to supply liability insurance of this much amount and stuff like that. So we get our insurance coverage through special event permit, not necessarily through a right of way permit.
I'm gonna, great questions, great discussion. I'm just, uh, to cross our Ts here, I'm gonna open public testimony. I'm just gonna leave it open, just in case someone jumps on. I don't think they will, but, you know. All right. Proceed. Keep talking.
I support the, the treating them differently. And if you want to discuss it more, we can, or I can just go, I guess, to making the motion saying so.
I have, okay, I have a quick, it's, are we thinking of anything besides a block party, or is that kind of like? I mean, I guess, you know, you talked about.
The block party parade, art show.
Okay.
Mainly just for like, that would be.
Okay. So I, I mean, it seems like, you know, Public Works should be made aware of road closures so that they can object if they have a reason to.
They go to management super review, so they, Public Works is part of that.
Tracy, we'll see it. Okay.
And fire, all the injuries are reviewed.
Okay. I, I, yeah, I'm, I'm personally of the opinion that we should make box, block parties really easy to do, because I think they're great. I agree. I don't know if we can make it even easier than we're proposing here, but maybe that's, maybe that's going too far. Maybe, maybe just add like a block party to our table of event information here, would that be pretty easy, man?
Yeah, that is something to come up with.